Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call your September 17th, 2015 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. Ask everyone to silence electronic devices at this time, phones, laptops, pagers, anything that's going to beep or make a noise. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Holly Taishi.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Tom Grinstead and Sarice Snowa are absent.
Okay, thank you. I've been gone for a few meetings, and I want to thank Garrett for taking care of the chair, keeping it warm for me. And I've had a chance to watch back some of the meeting video and read the minutes and try and familiarize myself, but I'll probably have to do a little bit more research to get caught up. So we'll start with this evening's minutes, or two sets of minutes actually, August 20th and August 27th minutes. And I've had a request from one of the Planning Commission members to hold off on approving the August 20th minutes, like a chance to review them in a little more detail and reflect back on the discussion that was had at that meeting. I was not at that meeting, so I wasn't going to be voting on them anyway, which would leave just four of us. So we're going to, we're going to hold off on reviewing and approving the August 20th minutes for today, unless there's opposition to that from any of the Planning Commission members. Okay, so August 27th minutes, I'm assuming everyone's read them. If I could have a motion.
Approved.
So moved.
Moved. Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
It was 22nd, and I was the first.
There you go. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so those minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone who's here to speak about any topic other than the topic of discussion tonight, which is the comprehensive plan update, the urban village and health focus. So if there's anything else you want to talk about, you can please come up and speak now. We're going to have an opportunity for public comment on the work session topic, and we'll do that at the beginning because there's only two people signed up. So everyone will get a chance to speak about that topic. Would anyone like to come down and talk about something else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period. So that's quickly moving us into our work session, which is great. I guess I should ask, the reason I want to have public comment at the beginning is because one of the people who signed up mentioned that they wanted to, or they needed to leave. So I'm okay with that. If, if the public would prefer to hear the staff presentation first, we can do that public comment after the staff presentation. Wendy, I know that you were... Okay. Sure. Okay, so then let's start with staff introduction and presentation. I think the commission might have a longer discussion, so I wouldn't, I would prefer to hear that public comment first and then move into our discussion, unless there's any, you know, clarifying questions for staff. So with that, Mr. Seppler? Or Lisa?
Good evening, Lisa Poole with the planning staff. And we're here tonight to talk about two of the focus area topics that have been, oh, sorry about that, that have been identified by the Planning Commission and staff as focus areas for the comprehensive plan update. And those five areas are housing, affordability and choices, urban villages, health, sustainability and innovation. So you talked about housing affordability at your August 20th meeting, and tonight we'll be talking about urban villages and health. So with that, we'll get started, and I'm going to tag Team with Tara on this one, so I'll pass it over to her after a few slides. But it's related to urban villages, we're going to provide you with a little background on what's in the existing plan, as well as the existing goals and policies, and then some recommendations for moving forward with the updates throughout the plan related to the villages. So what are urban villages? This is one of the city's key growth strategies, specific to infill. It directs a lot of our growth to these mixed-use, walkable, bikeable, transit-friendly areas along our transit corridors. And these are some aspects that we hope to achieve in some of these areas. The existing plan right now, this is the map that's in the existing comp plan, it identified 23 future urban villages, and those outlined in red are the eight that were included in the 2006 land capacity analysis. And you'll see in our recommendations that this map will look quite a bit different in the updated plan. The existing goals and policies, it breaks out those 23 areas into four different categories or types of villages, and it also breaks them up into five tiers, which is a priority, areas of priority where we want to direct our emphasis on, and we're concentrating efforts on tiers one and two. This is all in the existing plan. We required master plans for each of those, as well as design standards. And as I said, this is where we are directing our higher intensity land uses, so we can protect the character of our single-family neighborhoods. Since the plan adoption, urban village plans have been adopted for quite a few areas, and that includes downtown, Fairhaven, Old Town, Samish Way, Fountain and the waterfront. Barkley does not have an official adopted urban village plan, but it does function as one in many ways, and it is identified in the existing comp plan as an urban village. So with that, I'll pass it over to Tara to talk about what we plan on doing next and some incentives that we're working on.
Before I do that, I'm going to talk a little bit about how things are going in the urban villages. So as you can see, I think you guys have been supplied this information about the different villages, what's happening as far as residential growth in those and commercial growth. There's something pretty significant that has happened since we adopted the comprehensive plan in 2006, and that is the Great Recession. So it's important to note, as we look at growth in these villages, that several years during that time period, we were constrained by market factors and really hardly anything was happening. But what we were doing is planning these villages. Samish, Fountain and Old Town were all planned kind of during that period. Actually, Old Town was adopted just months before the recession hit. Old Town also was planned during, we started planning Old Town before the comprehensive plan was adopted, a time where the neighborhoods didn't really understand what the urban village was. And so that took us a few years to get through that. It led us to a lot of policy language and description in the existing comprehensive plan about what an urban village is. And so that kind of is the kind of the basis for a pretty lengthy chapter, and a lot of policy, which we'll get to a little bit later tonight. And then the waterfront district was also adopted, as you guys know, just a year and a half ago or so. So most of our villages were planned during a recession, so as we're just coming out of that recession, we're, we've got to give ourselves a chance to get things moving again. Fairhaven, Barkley and downtown were well-established as urban villages. Barkley started its residential development just prior to the recession as well. But we see more commercial growth in the Barkley district. And I think it's important when we're looking at how, it's hard to compare each one of these districts. Each one has kind of different factors that are going on. The waterfront and Barkley and Old Town to some extent have single kind of land ownership issues, not issues, but it's a factor that contributes to how quickly they, they move. But it also is helpful in that it creates some predictability for us as, as we look to the future. Other areas such as Samish, downtown Fountain, those have a variety of landowners and a variety of circumstances. Not every single landowner in an urban village wants to turn their land into a high-intensity mixed-use development. So there's a lot going on, which contributes to kind of the pace of development. We also have learned over the last decade or so that the multifamily tax exemption program, hopefully you're all somewhat familiar with that program, has contributed to some strong growth, particularly in the downtown area. So that basically, the city has done is we've identified areas that we want to see mixed-use development or residential growth. Downtown, Old Town, Samish, Fountain are all exemption areas. What that means is that for a period of eight to 12 years, depending on the affordability, the landowner does not have to pay property taxes on that, on that increased value or those improvements. So if you put a $10 million project in, you're not paying taxes on that 10 million for a period of eight years, for market rate, 12 for affordable housing. We've heard from developers, but we've also heard from bankers that it has made the difference in projects, and particularly in downtown. In Fountain, there's a project that was built on, is it Dupont at that point, before it turns down, that didn't get financing until the, and the developer was like, oh, we do have this multifamily tax exemption program here. And it made the difference to whether that project was financed or not. So we've seen those incentives really working. And so over this last year, the city has been exploring, and we've been working with council and have policy direction now on additional incentives for urban villages. So we looked at incentive, financial incentives, but we also looked at kind of those non-financial, the time is money incentives as far as streamlining permit processes, getting kind of things cleaned up in our code, so that it was more straightforward and easier to get things done to achieve the goals that the city has set out to do. So we have the policy direction on that. We have a number of, and I probably should have the little clicker, I'll just jump up here. I have some other slides that we prepared, I think. Okay, so we have, there's three examples here. The permit fee reduction, that is where we are looking at reducing fees in, in kind of some select areas, primarily because we want to really target and, and our incentives in kind of our primary villages. And what we've done, and part of that's due to fiscal constraints the city has. So we have seven, what we recognize, seven urban villages, and not really enough money to go around, because in Washington State, we are limited to what we can do as far as providing like tax incentives and such. And so the city needs to backfill in this case, and, and so that takes general fund resources. So we've worked with the mayor and the city council to kind of, to look at about a quarter of a million dollars per year. That would go towards redevelopment in the water, or not the waterfront district, I'm sorry, the downtown and the old town districts. We also recognize the waterfront district as one of those primary districts in our city center, but the waterfront district is getting significant financial incentive in other ways from the city, primarily through our investment in infrastructure there. So the waterfront district is not getting any further financial incentive. Expedited permitting is something that, one of those time is money pieces. Another innovative, I think, recommendation that's moving forward is exempting BNO taxes for businesses that locate in one of those districts. These have to be new businesses to Bellingham, so we're not trying to encourage somebody to move from one district to another within our community, but if they're coming from outside Bellingham or starting in one of those districts, they would not pay BNO tax for, or a reduced BNO tax for a period of years. This is a matrix here, I hope all of you have seen it, but we can send it out to you. This is the one that applies to urban villages. We also have one for affordable housing and economic development, kind of citywide initiatives, outlines each of the districts here, and which incentive either currently exists. We have actually quite a bit that we already have in place, like the traffic impact fees, for example, and then also some, some future and upcoming incentives. And so a few of our recommendations, Lisa is going to kind of end the night with the final three, but the first three here are to refine and streamline. I mentioned that the chapter, or the comp plan, the 2006 comp plan was adopted before our community really understood what urban villages were, and now we have six plans, and they have existing policies. So we have some opportunity to, I think, reduce the, the volumes of policy and language describing what villages are. We really want to stay the course. I think the community is, is headed in the right direction. We're seeing some really positive growth in the villages. The neighborhoods are understanding what they are. We're seeing businesses and, and we're seeing developers start to look at those areas and start to seek them out for redevelopment opportunities. So we're recommending that we do not change policy direction, and that we really focus, we have these seven villages. We're not going to be recommending that we run out and do a lot more planning. We feel like we have quite a bit of capacity at the moment, and so we want to really invest in these areas. And the way to invest is to, to look at not just these incentives, that's just one piece of the city's commitment to each of these villages. You guys have all seen what the investments by the city can, can do, in this case of Fairhaven, the Village Green was a great amenity that we brought in there in downtown. You've seen Depot Market contribute substantially to change an area, our investments in the Arts District, our investments at Holly and Railroad, and the leadership the city provided turned that area around. So we really need to stay focused. I think downtown is like taking off like really big time right now, and it has been a steady dedication focus of, of the city's for decades. And then we obviously need to take a look at where we're at, benchmark how we're doing, monitor our successes, tweak as we need to, we need to be a little flexible. If something's not working, let's say in Old Town, for instance, land ownership doesn't change, and that, that means that we don't get to really redevelop Old Town the way it's been envisioned, then we need to be able to shift and, and move that incentive or move those investments elsewhere. So we need to be flexible as well. Lisa, I'll, I'll flip this for you, and you can sit there if you want, or you...
Okay, so our other recommendations, as we said, this, we're really going to be focusing on implementing all of the plans that have been put in place since the last comp plan update, but we want to keep some placeholders in case those really do start to take off, and we want to do some additional planning. So those four areas identified in yellow are the ones that we would keep as placeholders. And we also want to start looking at the transit corridors connecting urban villages and see if there's any energy there for coordinated transportation and land use planning to energize some of those areas and activate those areas. And also, obviously, we're going to be referencing the adopted plans and all of the work that's gone into those. So a lot of the existing languages, Tara stated, will be, we can take that out, and we can reference those adopted plans and adopted design standards and regulations that have been put into place. So with that, that's our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Do any of the planning commissioners have questions at this time? We could take questions now if they're clarifying, or if not, we could have public comment and then have a more open discussion. Okay. Thank you very much. I think with that, we'll move to provide an opportunity for public comment. There's only two people who signed up, but I know a couple people came in after the signup sheet came up, so if you're not signed up, please feel free to come up and speak. You don't have to sign up to speak. Garrett?
Can we have lights?
Oh yeah, lights, sorry. Wendy Harris and John Cornelis are the two folks that are signed up. So Wendy, you're first on the list. We'll give everybody four minutes to talk, and look forward to hearing your thoughts. And anyone who's not on the list, again, who wants to speak, just when John's done, just come on down and up to the podium. And remember to please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Wendy Harris, before I speak, I have a question. So these comments will address the urban village, and then we'll have the discussion on health?
I have a question for staff. You know, health is a topic, is there any presentation on the health element?
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay, we can do that.
Okay, so we'll have two sessions, okay. Well, I'm not really a big fan of urban villages. What I'm a big fan of is a centralized downtown core. So to the extent that I heard discussion about downtown growing and us doing things in downtown, I think that's good. I think that's the direction we want to head. But when I look at those urban villages, it's just sprawl. It's just more traffic, and frankly, and I think it's something we haven't dealt with, it's, it's a lot of health issues as we sort of intensify development in these areas. And I'm, I think I'll address maybe more of that during the next session. But what I wanted to talk about is what's planned to be an urban center, the waterfront, because there's something important that hasn't been raised, and that's the problem of the trains. And, you know, we're all aware of the coal trains, but the oil trains are a new issue, and they've come up since we started developing the concept of the waterfront. And I don't think it's very good planning to be putting people and businesses within a one-mile blast zone, when we know those oil trains are unstable. They've established themselves over and over again over the last few years, as just how dangerous and unstable they are taking property and lives. And I live downtown right now, and I can tell you how many of those oil trains go by, and the volume is increasing. And there's two areas downtown in particular I'm concerned about. One is by Encojin, there's two huge tanks full of diesel fuel, and that train goes right by it. And we're talking about land that's rated for high seismic activity, liquefaction, lateral spreading, landslides. It's, you know, the odds are that at some point, we're going to have a seismic activity, or the trains are going to derail, and there's, it's going to be bad, because if it's near those tanks, it's not good. The other problem I have is by F Street. I live by, close to F and Holly, and between me and the train is a gas station. And this is where the train starts slowing down, because as they move ahead, they have to make kind of a sharp turn as they go around the corner to go onto Marine Drive, and they have to slow down. And it's when they make that turn that, that the trains become unstable when they have oil, because it sloshes back and forth. And so, and I can hear them with their brakes. Makes me a little bit nervous, and I think that's, I think that we're really going to have to deal with, as a community, what we're going to do to make people safe if we're trying to intensify development and make the waterfront an urban village. I'm also very concerned about, when I listened to this discussion, it was all about incentives, 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 what we can do for developers. And this is really supposed to be more of a focus on people, and that's what I wasn't hearing. And I don't like to see public wealth being transferred to the private sector. And, you know, if, if the opportunities are there and it's profitable, developers will come. I don't think that you need to give them all this money. I, I just think we need to be taking public funds and putting them to public uses.
Oh, 30 seconds, Wendy.
So I, I, those are my main concerns. And the, my final concern with the urban villages is I'm very upset that we're going ahead with all this planning, and we still haven't done a wildlife and habitat analysis. Now, staff's going to tell you that there's a ma, a habitat restoration master plan. That is not what I'm talking about. It doesn't, it was not a field, it didn't, it wasn't in the field, it didn't look at species, and it left big gaps. For instance, the bay isn't included, the whole Watcom watershed, Lake Watcom watershed isn't included, and that's how you connect the upland forest down to the bay, so big gaps. So before we start putting in these urban villages and putting in roads and barriers and people, we need to know where those habitat corridors are, and where, and where the habitat areas are of, of high value. And, you know, the city keeps putting this off and putting it off, and it's done deliberately, because the longer we delay, the more that's taken up, the more wetlands that are gone, wetlands are, you can't think of wetlands without thinking about habitat.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
John?
Could this be a right turn to talk about the old town area?
I think we're going to do another presentation from staff, and then it might be more appropriate at that point. Thank you, though. Looks like Clayton and Linda. Okay.
Somebody's phone.
Hello, my name's Clayton Petrie, I live in Bellingham. I just wanted to make a couple comments on some issues that I've witnessed, or seen over the planning of these urban villages and some of the reasons why I don't think they've been happening. The first and most important thing is you should look at the financial analysis documents that the city had produced at the time of, of doing some of these plans. And in particular, you should look at the one for Old Town and the one for Samish Way. And the reason why they're important is because in large portions of the urban villager zones, you're guaranteed to not make or lose money if you build in those areas. You know, I think it's pretty obvious when you get 0.0 units in Old Town, and we've had this planned for almost a decade now, or, you know, been working on it for that long, and you just don't have anything, there's an issue. And, you know, a lot of it has to do with that it's an old dump, and when you dig up, and the way you have to build on it, you have to, you have to float the buildings, and you have to dig up, you know, toxic dirt and dispose of, and it's really expensive. So that's, that's a big issue, especially if you're counting on, you know, these lands for, you know, your 20-year planning period, which is, you know, quite a bit of it's gone as far as how long Old Town's been adopted. And then Samish has other issues, you know, it has to do with how you can build there and the regulations and the bedrock underneath. You should look at the seismic study that, that they did and the financial analysis. Second thing is I want to echo Wendy's comments on the blast zones. Maybe it wasn't as big of an issue before, but it is now, and it's something that, you know, the city often says, well, you know, when things like this come up, we can just look at them and analyze them then. Well, it's come up, and, and you should really take a look at it. It has to do with financing, how you can finance these buildings that are in these areas, and just general public safety. I believe there's a countywide planning policy dealing with that. And then the third thing is we were talking about preserving the single-family neighborhoods, and I just want to comment that a lot of the neighborhoods that have single-family homes now have been rezoned to multifamily, and the people living there have no idea. Ask people that live in Puget or Roosevelt that have run into this, how they feel about that. And, you know, there's a fair amount of single-family neighborhoods that are going to be in for a pretty rude surprise when we do get this infill, this multifamily building in single-family neighborhoods, where you have to actually tear down the single-family homes before you can do this development. And that leads to another thing, where you're tearing down probably the most affordable homes, in, single-family homes in these neighborhoods. That's why they get torn down, unfortunately. You know, I, I've been fixing up kind of junky old homes for the last about 15 years, and, you know, I really like to see those homes that I've, you know, grown up by or delivered papers to, or whatever, you know, fixed up. or whatever, you know, fixed up instead of torn down. So, you know, we don't, I don't think it's true that we're necessarily preserving some of the lower-cost, single-family neighborhoods. Definitely preserving, you know, Edgemore and South Hill and stuff, but...
About 30 seconds.
That's all my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Clayton.
Hi, Linda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association. My bottom line still is regarding the stay-the-course thing. We have had plans for at least a decade or more for urban villages. And granted, some of that was during a period where people were not building, period. But I would like to see a little more detailed analysis of what's going on. When we say, for instance, that downtown is doing great, we have 660 new housing units in the last two decades. A quarter of that is Bellingham, Watcom County Housing Authority, and Catholic Community Services projects. A little less, I think it's like 23-plus percent. So I know it feels like we have more housing downtown. That's good. You know, if people want to move into that area, that's great. We still see the market research pointing other directions and remain concerned that if the city thinks it's really going to accommodate growth through urban villages, we're going to end up instead with continuation of Ferndale and Linden, growing at much faster rates than the city of Bellingham. So you've heard that. Okay, been there, done that. When you're looking at parking and bicycle pedestrian emphasis, may I remind you, I believe we think a lot of the growth in this area is going to be seniors. I'm 64, I've got bad knees. Trust me, if it's seniors, we're not going to be biking. So please keep that in mind as we look at all of these suggestions for cutting back on parking and so forth. One other possible thought is, again, is affordability. I would have to disagree with Wendy that incentives may be your only way to pull off this urban village intensification. It's not a matter of putting money into the developer's pocket, it's a matter of making these projects pencil out. I wish we had more realtors, et cetera, here talking. But when I go to the meetings and we chat with these people, I talk to folks who've done projects downtown and say things like, we'd never do that again. It didn't pencil out. We couldn't rent the retail space on the bottom. We're still having trouble. So it's worth checking into these things to see if the analysis is detailed enough to give you an accurate picture. And I thank you.
Thank you. April?
April Barker, 3127 Birchwood Avenue. I did want to see, I don't know, it may already be there. I'm still trying to get through that whole comprehensive plan. But when I look at this, I'm hoping that we have wording and verbiage that's encouraging uniqueness and some flexibility in each one of these urban villages. I think as we've seen in other cities and towns, you get kind of the same thing in every spot. And it doesn't encourage people to want to go over to the Barclay. Like right now, there's a cinema, and not everyone has that. So that we still, and we'll talk about this in health, but we're engaging and all these different communities are still going across town and wanting to go into these other villages. It's not only the people that are within them. So that was my only comment, that we have the flexibility and maybe even the wording that is encouraging some uniqueness in each one of these branding, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you to everyone who spoke. We'll wrap up public comment. And John, like we mentioned, we'll give you another chance to talk when we discuss the health topic. So with that, I'd like to open it up to the planning commissioners for questions or comments, staff, or just discussion. Anybody like to kick us off? Phyllis?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the concept of parking issues and particularly the urban villages. And I noticed words here about a reduction in free or subsidized employee long-term parking. The difficulty we have in Fairhaven in particular is that we're now implementing timed parking because no matter what we do, we couldn't get the tenants and their employees off the street. And so we're, but that does not add to supply. So we're looking at alternatives of how do we add to supply? And, which is probably ultimately going to end up with some kind of a metered, although the word meter is not correct. I'd like to see a very smart loop system there. And some sort of a parking facility. Obviously, any of those kinds of things are going to take place over a long period of time. But I'd like to see the city embrace that kind of thinking because we're all aging. And we're not going to take the skateboard and the bicycle and so on, and especially shopping or young families taking the kids someplace. People are going to park there. I think we sort of have the cart before the horse and that we're eliminating parking before we're eliminating the car. I'd like to see any parking facility done with the concept of when cars vanish and we're not using them anymore, then we'd repurpose the structure. So things are not lost. You're not going to have to bulldoze the structure just because people are deciding not to take their cars somewhere. But, you know, throughout Bellingham, I'm concerned about the reduction in parking requirements. And the car's going to be somewhere. Even if you convince people that they're going to take their bike or the bus to work, the car, they very rarely have sold the car to do that. The car's going to be at home. And so I'm diverting here, but in some of the neighborhoods, then having, you know, cutting down on the amount of car parking space, I think is going to come back to haunt us. And it's clogging up streets and neighborhoods that, in fact, I was just at a meeting for, up on Blueberry Lane, coming up with parking up there. And even though I can see the idea of reducing parking, it doesn't make the car go away. It just means people look for other alternatives of where to put their cars. And I'd really like to visit this whole thing of parking as an issue and be really careful about denying parking development in neighborhoods and in the urban villages. For one thing, in Fairhaven, what we see is if you prevent us from solving the problem, we just see it pushing people to the mall. They're going to go to Barclay, they're going to go to Bellisfer, they're going to go places where they can park because that's a main issue for a lot of people. And I'll just leave it at that. But I'd hope we can visit this another time as well.
Pardon me, Steve? Thank you, Phyllis.
Yeah, I've got a question for staff. On the grid you gave us on H18, H18 of the packet, regarding parking, reduced parking requirements, you show that every urban village except for Barclay currently has applicable reduced parking. Is that correct? And there's no new parking requirements coming? That everything that's proposed is now applicable in those places? Is that what this chart means?
Yes. So all, six of those seven villages have been planned recently, since 2007. And they did not, with the exception of parts of Fairhaven, I was not, that's the one village I have not been involved in. But parts of Fairhaven and parts of downtown, there is an exempt parking area. I'm not sure how much that's the case in Fairhaven. But the other urban villages, we're not talking about eliminating parking. In fact, each one, we have to look at what the circumstances are, how much on-street parking is available, what's going on with our adjacent neighborhoods. And in the case of Old Town and the waterfront and Samish and Fountain, there's parking requirements in all of them. So we've reduced the parking to not, to recognize that we're not dumping the car anytime soon. But if we're building places where people can do things beyond just being in their car, we might get some reduction from having maybe two cars per family to maybe one car per family. So it's just recognizing a little bit of a reduction, knowing that once you build a condo building and everyone gets to put two cars in that condo building, they're probably going to continue to put two cars in that condo building. So now, that doesn't mean the market can't supply more.
But none of these, these are already regulations or ordinances in place.
Yes.
We're not introducing anything new here.
Right. I think Phyllis is talking about the policy language and the comprehensive plan that lends itself to the planning, which is what we used to reduce, not eliminate, parking in the villages.
Quick follow-on on that. There's nowhere in town where we cap parking that you can provide in the sense that if you have a project and you want to put three stalls per unit, you could choose to do that, right? So it's, this is more, I look at this more like an incentive. If you want to provide less, then you don't have to provide as much, and it makes your project maybe financially, you know, look better. But you can't, like, in these villages, for example, you can provide standard parking. You don't have to go with the reduced, right? And there's no proposal from the city to kind of do anything like that, like cap parking anywhere? Is that on the agenda, Tara?
Not from, not from the staff.
Okay. Is that?
Oh, go ahead.
Jeff, go for it. Is it a follow-up?
No, in difference, sir.
Okay, let's go to Jeff.
Well, I like the idea of urban villages in general. I'm quite concerned, though, about how non-transparent the flow of money is. And by that, I mean, if a unit costs a couple hundred thousand dollars to build, let's say you do a two-bedroom condo slash apartment that's in a four-story building or three-story building over a commercial mixed-use floor, what does that actually cost? And then what are the city fees that you would normally pay to build that? And then what are the incentives that are getting layered on for BNO taxes and for deferred real estate taxes? What is actually the flow of money here? Because it seems to me that we're just making it very difficult to make rational economic decisions on whether we are actually subsidizing something and to what extent we're subsidizing it when maybe there's a better use for the money elsewhere as far as getting affordable housing or something else going on. And when I see BNO tax subsidies and I see all these other things, somebody else is paying the freight on that. You know, it's not as if that money doesn't exist. So does that $200,000 two-bedroom apartment condo become a $250,000 condo because of all the city fees? But then you're taking 50 off by paying for that through other taxes? Like, what is our baseline on, if you're trying to make decisions about housing forms and what makes sense, that tells you the market won't support what it costs to build it? So we're going to purposely subsidize it at the expense of single-family homes or taxpayers or somebody else? That's the thing that I see missing here, is I honestly don't know. You know, I like urban villages. Is the market there for what it costs to build them? If not, what level of subsidy is necessary? And is that a wise subsidy when we're looking at all the other housing forms that are out there? And I'd love to have a discussion. I hope the council has that discussion. But I don't know if that's an answerable question or not, but it concerns me.
If I might respond, I think there are a couple of things we need to clarify. An incentive and a subsidy have two different intents and purposes. An incentive is one where you use it to achieve an action that you anticipate happening at the timeframe you wish, and then you extinguish it. So in essence, what we're proposing in some of the policies that we're bringing forward, the thoughts, is that you need to develop metrics to measure how effective they are achieving your goal. And once they're achieved, you eliminate them. Incentives are necessary to accelerate what we think will happen, but to provide greater confidence interval for people to act earlier in the process. Once it's achieved, it should be extinguished. You don't need the incentive anymore. Folks will come in and the market will take over. The challenge is the pioneer use, those first uses in an area like Samish Way, which has no comps, which has no proven track record, where a proponent goes, well, I can get the dirt there and I can get a use there, but I'm worried about if the market will work. By providing an incentive, for example, in that location, we reduce a little bit of the risk. But we wouldn't do it for every use that would come. At some point, and we need to identify that metric, you stop and you switch your incentives to some other area because the market will carry it forward. A subsidy is an ongoing reduction of cost, which can go on forever. Subsidized housing exists in our city where we will continue to pay that subsidy so folks can live there for the term of the housing. So it's not time-specific. Its goal is to reduce it to achieve some social end typically. We are as concerned about providing incentives when they're not needed. Because quite frankly, with the number of urban villages and with the desire to jumpstart all of them, we want to redirect our money. Hence why Tara, I think, was right on point by saying we need flexibility and we need to be agile. We need to develop those metrics and say, are we succeeding? And when we reach that point where we feel confident that the pioneer use has been established and specifically we can transition, we should be able to remove it fairly quickly. So I think it's a strategy. Some would say, are you gifting the developers that money? Well, in a sense, we're asking them to take greater risk at a shorter timeframe to achieve a societal end. Otherwise, we could wait a long time till someone comes along on Samish Way. But I'm sure you'll agree, nothing achieves success as well as other success. If something goes in there, it gives confidence. I'll use the example of, there's a foundation that was created, and the foundation entirely was focused on, the Magic Johnson Foundation, of going into depressed areas. And the purpose of doing that was to jumpstart the area by providing confidence for future investors. Magic Johnson, a not-for-profit 501(c)(3), would go in and build a movie theater and two restaurants in a mixed-use building. And he would do it knowing that it didn't pencil, knowing that the market was unproven, but he had confidence that the inner city would come back. What happened is adjacent uses developed because he created generators and dross, those specific first uses that energized the area and gave confidence to it. And subsequent development would come in. Now, we're not saying that we wouldn't turn away Magic if he came up here with this foundation. But we're saying to some extent, we can use the incentives directed, not broadly, targeted with a metric of saying, what do we want to achieve before we switch? Might even be something that comes down and saying, first one in, who does a two-story building on Samish Way, gets the incentive, but the second might not. That's the kind of thing we're looking to work on, and that's what council's considering. They would like us to be able to extinguish or relocate them the minute we've achieved a identified end.
Well, I guess my point is that bootstrapping things has an opportunity cost. And you're shifting tax money in one direction and not another. And, you know, maybe housing vouchers for anybody in a certain income level is a better way to achieve an outcome. I don't know. But it makes me nervous because one of the things with affordable housing, and I don't, I mean lowercase affordable, that is affordable to a broad base, not the federal designation. Part of that is controlling building costs. So a lot of times when things get subsidized here, the costs go up over here. So that's a concern. We heard from, I can't remember who it was previously, that when they've tried to do percentages of developments as low income and they figured out what it costs, well, providing X number of housing units that provided the threshold ended up bumping up the rest of the units eight or $10,000. I mean, that was just penciling it out. Money comes from here, goes here. Well, that all of a sudden became not-so lowercase affordable housing. So that's what I'm concerned about, is cost shifting. And it'd be really nice to know what things cost. Why isn't it happening? Is it because of uncertain market demand? Is it because the market demand at the price point you can generate is a problem? And so you're subsidizing it through incentives? I don't know what I'm dealing with here. And so it just makes me, when I see that page of incentives and all these layers of things that are heaped on it, I actually don't know what the right thing to do is and what this responsible development pattern is. So I guess that's just a concern I have, that I don't know how you deal with.
Garrett?
Yeah, I just, I mean, just kind of furthering that thought or my own thought there is, on these incentives, I mean, we're identifying goals, you know, in our plan. These are tools to help, you know, meet those goals. It's not to say that they have to be implemented. It's, you know, and so maybe the question is, how are these implemented? You talked about metrics or, you know, looking at when am I, a good time to implement one of these incentives? How do you guys go about proposing to do that? What's the process when? What's the process when, to put them into play?
So we have, just to be clear, the, the council has already given the staff policy direction on the topic of incentives. What we're sharing with you tonight is, we are sharing a lot of detail about incentives with you tonight because it's one way, a recent way that the city has taken steps to implement the comprehensive plan. So the, the implementation of those incentives are really over the course of three years. They're in large part to do with the amount of time that staff has to get them on the books. And we have a three-year strategy that, that we can forward you and you can see each incentive. The financial ones are being implemented this year. And they, they are limited, very much so. They are not necessarily going to make or break a project, let me tell you that. When, when you're talking about percentage of costs associated with the development. But what we're hoping for is that it gets that investor or that developer as much as, you know, it, it does take the developer to make these urban villages transfer from what they are today to what we want to see happen. We want them to go, you know what? Boy, the city is serious about these urban villages. I think I'm going to look a little harder right here in this, this district. The multifamily tax exemption program that I was telling you that can, what we've been told by, by developers, but then also those in the finance world. When, when we met recently with the, the county assessor, we were asking, you know, what, what happens overall, like when you, when you reduce this tax here? And I asked like, what, what's the impact to that to all, to me as somebody that owns a home? He said, oh, I couldn't even measure it in pennies. Couldn't, it wouldn't even come to the penny threshold. And so, but it does make the difference to that one development. And so that's what we're looking for. And like I said, it's, it's, we're probably talking about financially incentivizing maybe two to three projects in a year. And it's, it's just a piece of, of their overall cost.
I see, I, I appreciate what you just said. I see incentives as a logical element of implementing. Like you said, their implementation tries implementing what we've already decided as a community is, is our, is our focus, which is urban villages. And if, I understand what you're talking about, Jeff, but if we open up the, what you're talking about is open up a discussion of our urban villages, what we want to do with our community, or do we want to put housing in other places? Because if, if, you know, we, if we pick a spot where we want to put everybody, we have to make that, we have to polish that stone a little bit for people to look at it. And at least that's my experience from being involved in the development industry is people will look all over town for, you know, the most appealing location. And if we don't polish that stone, we might have people going, I'll go build out by the new Costco because there'll be a lot of people there or something like that. So I like the idea. I think it, you know, I don't know the numbers either, but I like the idea because I think it's a logical follow-on to what we've already decided. Unless we're going to make, take a major shift in our policy direction and say, urban villages aren't what we want to encourage, you know, it seems like the logical step for me. I have questions about where we're putting them and what we're doing with some of these that I want to ask later. But, you know, in general, that's my thought.
If I might, on page 16 of the staff recommendation are the, staff report is our recommendation. And specifically on this topic, we're looking for policy language that will allow us to benchmark and monitor the incentives to deal with. It was several members of the commission that brought that issue up. How do you know if they're working? What are they really providing? You know, when do we decide we've, we've done, got what we need and can move on? We need to focus on implementation. That would be the kind of thing we look to guidance for adding to the plan, saying a strategy is to develop those metrics, monitor it annually. And then that's coupled with the ability to be flexible with both the implementation schedule and to respond to opportunities. In essence, the, the, this is something that's not often put in the same sentence. We need to make government nimble, or it never occurs in the same sentence. We need to be nimble on this so that if we agree on metrics and those metrics say we've achieved our end, it's, it's carrying its own weight, we can redirect our efforts. And then we could also be ahead of the curve to look to say, well, gosh, those emerging areas that are indicated as potential, perhaps we should look a little more fully at this point about seeing if we should bring them up to speed and what they'll take to go. So I'd bring your attention to the staff recommendations. I'd focus, we would like guidance on the focus on implementation, A through, well, it's A through D and then goes on to the next page itself. And I think really a key issue before you tonight is the change from 30 urban villages and urban centers to a much smaller universe with some potentials. Just to clarify it all that that's what we're starting with and that's where we should focus our effort.
So practically speaking, you've, you, or I guess how this plays out, you've proposed these recommendations. Is the idea that if we, whether or not we agree with them, but if we support them, that you would come back with actual policy language?
Yes.
That we would propose to add to the comprehensive plan?
We, we looked through the comprehensive plan and what's contained in the staff recommendation is not specifically addressed or addressed clearly.
Yeah.
So as this is a refinement of the existing plan, we're hoping to implement those to provide the, the clearest direction. And if you looked at that map with 30 different urban villages, you kind of go, what are we doing here? If you look at the map above you, I think you could see the, the distinction. We really have narrowed it down, focused it. So these are the ones we're working on. Here are the metrics. We'll keep an eye on things. We won't expand our scope. We're going to target a couple and really focus on those and work our way along.
Are you looking for direction from us as to which of these to pursue?
We would hope if you read them and you think that they are inappropriate, please tell us that and, and we should revise them. If you think they should be expanded or clarified, if you have questions about their efficacy, we're here to discuss with you and get direction. Because our next step would be, if you said, these are roughly right, we'd like to see the language. We craft policy language for you and bring it back.
Well, I appreciate what Jeff, the concern you did raise. I mean, I do, I do get that. And I completely agree that, you know, you take money from one spot, it ends up, goes somewhere else or the, the ask goes somewhere else. So particularly to item D, I think it's critical. And if we want to talk about that a little bit more, we can. But I think it's critical that we add policy language that encourages the city to... It doesn't sound like we have done that, that research that you're asking about and we need to, to start monitoring that. Jeff?
Yeah, actually, I'm, I am fine with the staff recommendations as far as that goes. I think the really interesting topic is going to be when you go through all these policies that are in the current plan and you start hashing through which is important and which you ditch. And sometimes when they're counterproductive. So you start looking at, there's a lot of language you hear about design standards, about retail use on first floors and all that kind of stuff, and that drives costs up. So when your developers say, hey, it doesn't pencil out to put something in an urban village, how much of it is that versus the need for more incentive money to overcome these other things? So I'm just like, I think you know where I'm coming from. You know, it's a matter of grinding through that, those things and making sure that the whole plan is consistent in what it's trying to get to and not throwing up barriers just because.
I agree with that completely. There's definitely some existing topics that we should probably discuss too, or existing goals, policies.
So, okay, like if we're looking at chapter, chapter two land use, this is language that's already within the existing plan. So like on page, on page is this? Seven?
Yeah, seven.
On page seven with the urban center rankings, so that, that's to be updated then?
Yes, all of those goals and policies listed in the memo are existing just to show you what's in there so you don't have to dig through each chapter and do it yourself.
Yeah, no.
It's just a reflection of snapshots of each chapter. So yes, all that needs to be updated.
So then if it was like appropriate, like looking at the tier one, tier two, tier three, sort of ranking, how successful, you know, those are intended to be in a 20-year period. It's got, you know, tier, you got Old Town up in tier two, which would be, you know, a higher likelihood that it would be developed in a 20-year period than the tier three, right? I mean, the, that ranking system and...
I, I think that was the intent when they crafted it.
When they crafted it.
We're coming back and saying is it hasn't happened like this, folks. And we need to revise it, narrow it to what we can actually focus on and bring better tools to make it happen.
Do you intend on keeping a ranking system?
It's likely we'll have a much smaller universe at the end of this. There'll be just a few urban villages and they'll be ranked concurrently.
Okay.
There, in terms of incentives, there's a separate strategy that the, the council is proposing to focus efforts. That was that focus first, achieve results, then redirect. And I think they're looking at city center and Old Town, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, city center, where the financial incentives are being focused because we have limited resources. But then we look at each of the districts to look at whether or not, do we really need to incentivize development in Fairhaven? We've determined probably not. Fairhaven's land values are about the highest in town. That, you know, we saw, we saw investment there without any help from the city. So each district's a little bit different. Those in, in pink are the ones that are adopted and that's kind of where we're like, stay the course. They're, they're already enabled. And the tiers that you have in, in the comp plan, the tier one was, they're enabled. I think it says downtown Barclay, if I remember. I don't have it in front of me. That meant that type of development can proceed right away. And then we looked at the next tier, how much, how much was needed in order to get that entitled.
So are you looking for, I mean, comment from us to, you know, to say, you know, we, we think that, saying this as a group, but I'm just saying the tiering system should be, you know, eliminated at this point. So we'd narrow down to existing urban villages. We don't need a tier system, you know, to identify priority. You know, well, that's...
I think we would because I think you're dealing with many more centers. I think we're dealing with seven explicitly identified, including the waterfront. I don't think we need to tier. I think Tara is exactly spot on. There's different unique circumstances in each one and we want to be able to capture that.
Yeah, okay.
What do they, what do they need to make them work? And then the financial resources, for example, are prioritized.
Yeah.
Because that's what we have to work with.
Identifying barriers, you know, I mean, like in Old Town, there's geotechnical barriers that you probably should be identified in, in the plan. So acknowledged at least because financially that, you know, we've seen there's land ownership issues, but there's also physical barriers too that are limiting.
Yep, and Clayton's right with that. And that is addressed in the plan. And it, it's a real issue that, that, that Old Town, same as the waterfront. Both areas of our community, the costs associated with developing there are higher than, than elsewhere.
And I would say one thing, I, I don't want it lost in the shuffle, the fact that if we have a district that's working well, like Fairhaven and Barclay, we wouldn't work with those folks to see what additional capacity could be provided, to see what additional things can occur to, to help facilitate development. Please don't get us wrong. We, we just have to tailor our skills and resources to match the circumstance in each one.
Just to clarify real quick, or follow on, I guess, on that. I counted, we've got 23 listed in the plan right now. We've got seven that are developed or have plans, except for Barclay. And your recommendation number four is that there's four potential areas. So the way I read this was that we would basically scrap the 23 and say, we've got seven. And then we were thinking about maybe these four more within the planning period? That, that's what this recommendation is. And, and that wouldn't preclude adding a fifth or, or something down the road. It's just that we want to identify in the plan, actually identify that these four are areas that we think are the, maybe the next ones to go to?
We would monitor. We would look. We think these are the emerging areas that would be the likely next steps based on development patterns we're seeing now. We may not get it right. Other areas might develop more quickly and we have to be nimble and revise. But we thought it's better to get a smaller universe to, to be able to focus our efforts. And the risk of having too many is you start diluting it. Someone says, well, I want to start on this and it's, it's not going to achieve that end. We end up with a singleton development that doesn't really...
Yeah, and we're, you have to be realistic about what's taking place over the last 10 years and what's likely to take place over like 10 or 20. And when this concept was introduced, there was no historical precedent to look back on and say, we can reasonably expect. So, you know, maybe at that time, a larger number. I, I agree 100% that scaling it down to focus on really enhancing the ones that are already, you know, underway. Because there's a lot of room left there in those areas. So I think that's a great strategy and the, you know, but to talk about these four, you know, newer areas, there's other areas that were identified in the previous plan, you know, are, are these the appropriate areas for new?
Jeff?
I actually had another idea that I don't think is in there, but might be worth pursuing. It'd be nice to have some provisions for de-escalating or de-emphasizing an area if it turns out that it's, that the changing conditions have resulted in different information. For example, you know, in Old Town and that section of the waterfront adjacent to Old Town, if that ends up being extremely costly to develop due to certain events or standards or train traffic or whatever else, there should be, you know, some sort of provision in there to basically say, hey, look, it's not worth investing public money in there. You know, it works fine as an industrial, commercial area as it is. Let's go put resources elsewhere instead of feeling like you've got a 20-year plan here, you know, we're going to march to it, we're going to keep going. So it might be worth having something in there that basically says, you know, geotechnical, whatever comes up, economic or, or, you know, the need for public facilities or something else. You can basically say, oh, hold off, we're going to back off on that area. So I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but it might be worth anticipating that and having that in the plan at some level.
I think that's a great idea. And correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe recommendation 3B would be like a baseline starting point for that, developing that kind of language? We're talking about, Jeff, preserve flexibility to amend the implementation schedule. Not just implementation, but non-implementation, right? So I, I think that's a great comment. And maybe at some point tonight, we need to go through these recommendations and be more direct with staff about whether or not we support them and want you to proceed with them. I don't know if that would be helpful for you in developing the policy language to bring back to us. I think for now, we're kind of having a discussion, but at some point we may want to focus on these because it sounds like we're hitting some of them, jumping around. Does anybody have any other like clarifying type questions for staff or any, at this point?
It's not a clarifying question.
Go for it.
But I was just going to say, you know, at this point on this particular topic, I think the staff recommendations are a very good starting point. And I, you know, on my page, I don't have any big Xs and sad faces and things like that. So I don't know if it makes sense just to go through and, you know, find out what people have heartburn over if anything. Because I'm broadly okay with this, just...
Yeah, let you know. Phyllis?
I particularly like the concept of flexibility here. I already put a smiley face next to 3B. I like that. I think that's going to be really important because regardless of how much thinking we do about it now, we cannot anticipate everything there is, that's going to be coming up as dynamics change things.
Well, I agree, Jeff. You know, I, I think the recommendations as a baseline for coming back to us with policy language are really good. There's a couple of things I wouldn't mind talking about more, but in general, I, I agree completely. And I don't know, do you want to, do you want to try and tackle some of these existing items? I mean, staff, I don't know how you're going to pull stuff out if you don't get feed, other than from your own ideas, if you don't get feedback from us.
I, I would say if, this is where we need to be roughly right rather than precisely right.
Sure.
So if you think this is the general direction, the stay the course, refining existing policies, providing greater adjusting flexibility, reducing the number, benchmarking, establishing means of benchmarking so we could see if we're really achieving our end and working it. As well as, you know, sort of how you do future ones or how you de-assess the ones that aren't successful. We realize we aren't going to be able to get traction on from circumstances. If those general things are roughly right as themes, we feel comfortable going back and starting the process to draft out the policy for them. I think that might be easiest because we can come back and you could say, no, that's too broad or not narrow enough. Need to be more targeted. What do you mean by metric? You know, what, what kind of metric are you talking about? That kind of thing. Is it a number of units or is it time or is it both? Or type of units? So we could do that.
Okay. Garrett?
Yes.
Yeah, but just my last thought, you know, we talked a lot about incentives. I think incentives are extremely useful and extremely healthy tools to help meet goals. And I think, you know, it might be a good idea to define the difference between an incentive and a subsidy because they are different things. One has the opportunity to produce, you know, and incentive for the multifamily tax exemption, but like you said, there were some projects that wouldn't have been able to go forward. It helped produce those, it may have been a tipping point. You can get more units, you know, that are being taxed, you know, downtown. So if the construction of 500 units in our downtown core was, you know, incentivized by a multifamily tax exemption, that's now 500 units when that tax expires, they're paying it and those fund schools. So they're tools and they're, it's different than a subsidy. And it may be important to clarify that.
Just not to belabor it, but a good analogy for this is, you know, you're going to buy a car. It's probably something you've been thinking about, it's been in your budget, you look at the numbers, you look at the cost on it. And then there's a rebate that's offered for that weekend and it's enough that makes you want to go to the dealer and take a look. You were already committed to buying the car. You knew you were going to spend the money, but it prompted an action. Our incentives are very modest and we're hoping they will just take a project that they're sort of thinking of doing and make it happen a little sooner, push them over the limit.
Well, if we're going to move forward, kind of encouraging you to pursue these, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make that I'd like you guys to think about and come back with. One of them is related not to what we're proposing, it ties in, but it's one of our existing strategies and that's regarding TDRs. We have, we have some strategies that talk about implementing the TDR program and there's some language about utilizing the TDR program to provide density bonuses. And I'd really like to hear more from staff about the effectiveness of that because my experience is that it hasn't been utilized and that it almost in that sense becomes a de-incentive in the sense that, for example, in the King Mountain neighborhood where we have a base density and a maximum density and you can only achieve that through some sort of TDR, there's other options that do work, like the density bonus program where you provide open space things, but one option is to just buy TDRs. I don't know if there's anyone who's done that and I'd like to know if any single development that's occurred or is proposed has used it because I don't like the idea of us promoting things that just don't work and we should be refining what does work. And so for me, I'd really like to know more about the effectiveness of that program. Maybe you have an answer now, maybe it's something we bring back later, but for me, that's a big one because what we see in King Mountain neighborhood is people choose not to build to the maximum density available to them because they don't want to have to pay $5,000 or $7,000 a unit to get that density. And so in my mind, that's like encouraging less density and I don't, I don't think that's a good policy. So that's something I'd like to hear more about. The comments regarding traffic and transportation resonate with me. Everyone is saying that this community is older and has a, has a segment of the population that's older that's going to continue to grow. And so those comments, I think, resonate with me is, I'm not suggesting we plan for the vehicle, but planning just for the bike, we should be looking and focusing on all, and I know we are, but our mass transit opportunities, bus systems, how we prioritize those things for elderly people who need to get around and don't want to drive. So that's something I'd like, one of our recommendations is transit corridors and we should be looking at not just bikes, you know, I love these green pavement markings we've got and I'm sure they're going to help, but also bus systems. And we have a good, good system built, but building on that. So that's the second thing. And then the last, the last thing is Barkley. I'm curious about Barkley because Barkley's one of our tier one. It doesn't have a plan. We've implemented plans in all these areas. I realize it's like a single entity owner, so it's probably more difficult because they have a greater interest in the entire urban village, but I'd like to see us talk, talk about Barkley specifically in our comprehensive plan and how we're going to get more development there. I'm concerned that with a single entity, development will occur much more slowly versus if you had 20 different owners all interested in developing at the same time. Barkley can't build 20 buildings all at once. So Barkley's a spot where we're planning on putting a lot of growth. It's been successful, but I'm worried about our ability to keep that pace up if we don't think really hard about, maybe, I noticed there's a comment about a plan, maybe, maybe a plan's appropriate. I'd like to see some policy language specific to how we do that. And if we can encourage Barkley to come to the table and get that plan done. And if there's ways to push them faster, I guess. And I know that's probably really hard to do, but those are the three things that are on my list. Jeff?
If you want to talk about those in reverse order, I believe there was a representative from Barkley at our meetings prior to this that said that there were certain things they wanted to do, that they couldn't do, that they were looking forward to this process because then they'd be able to do them. I never heard anything else. I have no idea what they were alluding to, so...
We haven't heard anything, but they, in that letter, they also commented on thinking that they could accommodate more density. And we look, you know, so that's a big part of it. You know, we're talking about where we put people.
Yeah, well, since it's a single entity, it'd be worth talking about where they fit in or don't fit in, in this whole overall discussion because, you know, the onus is on them to some extent to figure out what they want to do and what their financing is and how fast they can go. But on the other hand, they're part of the plan, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't want to hijack that though. If you want to talk about those in reverse order, then that might be worth doing.
I don't even expect to get any feedback now. I'm just kind of throwing those out as things that I'd like to hear more about. And you're right, we did hear from them and then didn't hear from them and it seems like an opportunity.
I'll just mention that we are in conversation with Barkley. In fact, Jeff was here earlier tonight. So we're having conversations about the plan, a potential plan in the future. But why they're tier one, remember, is Barkley has the entitlements, the design standards, they have a law already in place to be an urban village. So we do need to talk about exploring that planning with them. There is also, like when I mentioned, the realities of when you have single ownership like that, there is only so fast a pace that company can handle. So that is, it is nice that we have many options, not just, we're not relying just on one urban village. So things can move over the course of this 20-year period and as an area can handle it.
I noticed that they're probably the least incentivized urban village on here. And so I'm curious about why that's the case. When you look at the map, they've obviously been successful, the map that you showed, other than downtown and Fairhaven, those three seem to be the most successful. Is the idea they don't need the help? Is that a loaded question?
There are a number of issues that come up. First, that no plan has been prepared and that's raised some concerns by some on council.
No, you said no plan has been, the fact that there's not a plan?
Haven't done the urban, the urban plan. Hence the discussion about doing a plan to do it. The second is, the advantage is when you control the entire site, you control the environment and they've done a very good job in terms of the quality of their development and the projects they bring online. The disadvantage is noted by Commissioner Brown is it's slow because they're doing one at a time. Our discussions are clearly always predicated on how can we speed up achieving the end? And I could see a plan and I'm just suggesting that says we can give additional units to that location, but it's time sensitive to try to say, well, you need to...
You have to build them.
Yeah, you got to build them. So I think that might be a logical starting point. We are in discussion with them. I will say they're good folks to work with and they are, they are working on long-term plans for further development. We just need to more formalize that as part of a city process.
Well, that's good to hear. You know, I like, I agree, Terry, you said that every single one of these is different. So we have to look at them all differently and that one's kind of unique. And so that's why I'm curious to kind of hear what the city thinks about how we address them since they are so unique. Anyway, that's it for me. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to refer to the exhibit on 17. And bullet point number four, thoroughly, thoughtfully consider the identification of potential future urban villages. And you list a few there. I've got a couple of comments. First about, about the Cordada and Lakeway-Lincoln. First Cordada, if you take a look at that, there's really nothing north of the I-5. You know, how many times have we heard of nothing north of I-5? If that yellow splotch represents the neighborhood as defined by the Cordada neighborhood, that has changed significantly in the last year in that now there is a huge park right in the middle of that. And all the retail plans have gone out the window several years ago. It's going to be all housing. There's no transportation corridors shown going up that way. But when you realize what's there, you've got the Guide Meridian, you've got Bakersfield, and now you've got the new Costco properties across from, or the proposed development across from the Fred Meyers. Seems to me we've got to rethink that whole process. If we're going to have an urban village, it can't be in the middle of a housing-only area, which is now that area of Cordada. You're going to have to put it into a mixed area where you have mixed industrial, you have retail, you have huge retail along Bakerview. I, I just don't see any real thought going to the north end and to the urban village concept up there. And I know we're talking 20 years away, but you've put an urban village right in the middle of a bunch of housing, mixed housing. And that's not what I envision as a future Barkley or a Samish way where we get great mixed uses down there. So I really see a void, everything north of I-5 in this planning process. And things have changed. And I think we've got to consider now that the bulk of that is now going to be a park, park area and related uses. And there's, there's a few retail businesses, but there's not many. So I think that that has to be rethought, whole concept there. And, and I'll refer down to Lakeway and Lincoln. I know we've got a lot of mixed housing going on down there now, but it is so close to the downtown urban area that I, I really question the usefulness of that area. It's almost totally developed. You can include it into the downtown area. I would hate to see anybody trying to incentivize that area there when a matter of four or five blocks, you're into the downtown urban area. So I just think the location, and I know these aren't exact, but I think the thought of having that as a potential urban village has gone by. Those are my two thoughts.
Well, for fear of co-opting Jeff's thoughts, I'm still going to do it. I think that your comments were accurate, that the staff recommendations at the end of this struck me as pretty comprehensive in terms of what we need to look at. They kind of hit on all the topics we've raised as issues, you know, where these things should go, Steve, we need to thoughtfully consider that and all of these issues. So I know you don't need a motion, but I think we should give some direction to staff, unless there's more comment this time, that they should proceed based on these recommendations to develop some specific goals and policy language for us to evaluate. And then at that time, we can maybe talk about those, those details, where these go, you know, how we, how we deal with incentives and things like that. So if, maybe if head nods, everyone agrees that that's an okay way to proceed, obviously more common if there is any.
My comment is kind of a sidetrack from this, but we keep talking about encouraging people to take their bike. I'd like to see some language somewhere that puts some responsibility on the bike rider to become visible, especially in our winter months. I, there have been more than one situation in which I've just about taken out a bicyclist because they're, they're wearing dark clothing, dark bike, no reflectors, no lights, and I'm pulling out on a stop sign to make a turn and they're the person in. And I've been told that the responsibility is on the automobile driver, but I would not want to be that automobile driver that has to live with having run over a bicyclist and killed them because I couldn't see them. And I think that we need to start looking as, as a city, making bicyclists responsible for maintaining their visibility, especially in the dark hours. I'm going to start here at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, November through February. So I'd like to see that in here someplace. I'm not sure where it would find its place, but not to be overlooked.
Second.
Just a last thought. Steve brought up a good point and I hadn't really considered about, you know, these areas identified in yellow as potential, you know, future growth areas. I know like James Street in that area can be unique and there's some growth potential in there, there's some redevelopment potential along James Street corridor there. Birchwood, you know, and Maplewood, there's a lot of different housing uses there, there's high intensity, you know, multifamily and there's some commercials, so that, that area maybe. You know, maybe when this comes back though, it might be a good idea to just evaluate, you know, Lakeway and Lincoln or Cordada to see if, if we're talking about condensing our goals, you know, maybe we don't need four potential new areas, maybe we need two. Maybe we need none.
What I might suggest is we can just come up with what you look for, for a potential area and give us the flexibility when the time's ripe to do it. What we're trying to show is that there are some that might have some merit, but we haven't done the analysis and haven't had the discussion. And it might be somewhat confusing, I think. So what we should do is really just say, when, when time is ripe, when we pass these warrants from others being successful, we should look at these areas. Or there might be a causal project that comes in and one of them that accelerates our use and give us a few things to look at to say, does it warrant elevating to an urban village?
Yeah.
And the first question would be, are the other urban villages, you know, achieving their ends? The second is, do we need additional capacity? Third is, is there a likelihood of success, you know, which would help address, it's a bad place to put it or good. We could do something like that.
I think that'd be good.
Yeah, that, that makes good sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote on it? Push it along?
Do we need to vote?
Move on?
I don't think we need to vote. I think we've, we can just...
Yeah, I mean, it seems like everybody wants to have staff proceed with this as a basis.
So unless there's any opposition, I think we can just let staff assume that's the direction. Yeah. Okay, so I think, thank you for fielding all those questions. I think we should take a break before we start health. So what time is it? 8:30? Heather, what's the official clock? Okay, so we'll come back at 8:40. Okay, everybody, we'll call the meeting back to order. For those of you who stayed, thank you. And we're going to move into our second topic of the night, which is a discussion about health. And Lisa is going to take us away, and then we will take public comment after her presentation and then have a discussion. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. So this will be your third focus area. We've done affordable housing, urban villages, and healthy communities. So I'll just touch briefly on some background information, the existing goals and policies in the comp plan, and our recommendations. So health is an issue that is typically a sort of a byproduct of your existing goals and policies. But this time around, number one, it's required by the Washington State Growth Management Act, and it's also an emphasis that's been identified by the public and the planning commission and staff as being important as an overarching principle for the plan. So as I stated, the Growth Management Act requires that you look at approaches to increase physical activity, including neighborhood commercial nodes that you can walk or bike to, transit or pedestrian-oriented development, linear parks and trails networks, and then they also do require a pedestrian and bicycle component. So just to provide you a little background on healthy community design principles, so these are some of the principles that we look at to make our community more healthy. And those include open spaces, parks, mixed-use development, good pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, good mass transit, affordable housing for peoples of, people of all income levels, fresh fruits and vegetables, access to farmers' markets and community gardens, for example, and then community centers where people can gather. The health benefits of healthy community design, some of those are listed here, and these include physical health as well as mental health, strengthens our social fabric, it lessens our impacts, our climate change impacts, and improves air and water quality. So the existing comp plan includes a lot of goals and policies already related to health. It's really pretty strong in this area, and all of those are listed here. Just to highlight a few, our sense of community and our quality health and childcare, as well as our design standards that encourage walkable and bikeable communities. And these are some of our plans and projects that we are doing to implement those goals and policies. We recently have adopted bicycle and pedestrian plans in 2012 and 2014. We've also passed several greenway levies for parks, affordable housing programs, the city operates three community gardens, we have a climate action plan from 2007, several environmental plans and regulations, our downtown placemaking, we work with nonprofits and other groups to do placemaking in these urban villages, and lastly, urban villages, which we already talked about tonight. So our recommendations are really just sort of refining what's already there. We worked with the Waukesha County Health Department. They conducted an audit of several chapters in our plan and found that there were a lot of strengths already there, it's just slightly tweaking them or saying that we're going to continue to support programs or we're going to strengthen them. Specifically, their top priorities are linking planning with desired public health outcomes, highlighting stable, quality, affordable housing as a functional public health issue, and strengthening the focus on health equity in underserved populations. So these are the additional recommendations related to transportation, housing, and economic development. And as I stated, these are really related to continuing to support our housing programs and expanding some of those that are already there. So with that, I'll have a seat, and then you can ask some questions, and we can expand on that if needed.
Thank you. Let's take public comment. John, you want to go first this time? Okay. Remember, please name and address. Thank you.
Yeah, so my public comment, my public comment on this has to do with how the city handles...
Sorry, can you state your name and address, please?
Oh, yeah. My name is John Cornelis, and I live on 4703 Aldrich Road. I'm not actually in the city limits, I'm just right outside. But what I wanted to comment about tonight is how the city handles utilities outside of the city. And I have a house that I've been living in for over a year without any water going to it. And the city water line runs through my driveway, and I bought this house about a year and a half ago, and I lived in it for a couple months, and then my well went dry. And so I tried drilling another well there, and then I also had the health department there while I drilled the well, because in that area there, there's several other neighbors that have had their wells go dry. And so there's several other people that have the same issue. Some folks more north to me are able to get on public water through the gravel line water district, but because I'm so close to Bellingham, I'm unable to do that. So anyway, the health department wrote me a letter to encouraging the city staff to approve me a hookup to the city water line there. And the city staff wrote up a contract for me, and it had to go in front of the council, and the council voted it down. And I kind of understand why they did it, and it's more, they just deny it to anybody outside of the city, probably to prevent sprawl. But, you know, like, in my case, my house is already there, and so there wouldn't be any extra sprawl if, you know, water was supplied to my house. There's several other people I know that have this same issue, and so I would just encourage the planning commission to maybe somehow, in the comprehensive plan, put in place something to help out folks like me or folks that live in a already heavily developed area that have maybe a city lot or something that would be great for a family home, to be able to hook onto the Bellingham utilities. Being that Bellingham controls so much of the water around the area, they actually supply several water districts, and if you live in those water districts, sometimes you can get hooked on. But if you live where Bellingham is actually where you're going to be supplied, they just have right now moratorium where you can't be hooked on. So it's pretty difficult to live in a house without water, and if you ever go without water for even six or seven hours, you'll really understand that. So, but I would encourage you guys to somehow look at a plan that would help people that are literally maybe a few feet out of the city limits to be able to hook up to that, especially when it doesn't cost the city anything. The water line runs through my driveway, and I would have to pay one and a half times what someone in the city would pay for my hookup and for my water. And that kind of gives an economy of scale to, to the utility system that we have. I mean, the more people that are hooked up to the existing lines, the better off it is because you're, you're using those lines to their capacity without, you know, having to build more. It supports the system, and it helps control the price for everyone in the city when all that system is used to its capacity. So if that water line running through my driveway is just there, there isn't that one extra person to help maintain that infrastructure, even if supplies, you know, how many people down the road.
About 30 seconds.
Okay, so that's, that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you for being patient to make those comments. Wendy?
I'm really glad to see an emphasis on health. It's a subject that's near and dear to my heart. But I really think that including mixed uses and density as something that fosters health, that needs to be removed. It's not true at all. And we've known since the Middle Ages, when you, when you cram a lot of people in together, it breeds disease. If you look at actuarial figures, you'll see people who live in the country live longer than people who live in cities. And that's because the higher density that you have, the more people are exposed to lights, to noise, to stormwater runoff, to fumes... And if we're going to be having higher density and infill, we've got to have more stringent regulations, and people are opposed to that. But you can't have people packed in together unless you have ordinances for light. I've had, when I was living in Silver Beach, people had these floodlights that would come on all night, and I ended up having to get blinds that blocked the sun completely, which I didn't like. And it was noisy. My neighbors' kids would be out, you know, at midnight in the summer. All these different kinds of things come up, so I don't think it's a health incentive, you know, a benefit, and I think, in fact, you need to regulate if you do go that way. One of the things I think you should add, though, is pets, because pets make people healthy. Socially, you know, if you're older, if you're disabled, you become very isolated, and that pet provides a lot of emotional comfort, and it also makes you get out of the house. Because if you have a pet, you may not want to walk, but you'll walk your dog. And having that goal in there will help the city understand that dog parks are important. And I'm actually not criticizing the city on this. They've done a pretty good job, but we want to keep that, you know, in our goals. But what I would like to talk about is things we're doing that are not healthy, and that is, we're putting low-income homes by the freeway in low-lying areas where wetlands were, and it's just, it's not healthy. You know, we're putting these big apartment complexes by Baker View and Lincoln, studio apartments where we're cramming people in. Freeways expose people to diesel fumes, and that's really dangerous. It exposes people to noise, which disrupts sleep, which is very dangerous. And I think that we're really creating some social and economic justice issues in how and where we're putting lower-income housing, and so I think we need to look at that. But mostly here, I want to talk about problems with wood burning smoke. I have been looking for a house, literally, seriously, for a year with a realtor, and in the city and in the county. I have a lot of restrictions because of my health. The biggest problem I've run into is wood burning smoke. People are burning more wood in their fireplaces, and now they have fire pits. And I cannot find a single place to move to in this county where I can get away from smoke. And I should be able to stay in the city. I want to stay in the city. It seems to me that having, having an outdoor fire pit, recreation, is the worst possible reason to allow something that's so harmful like smoke. We have people that have asthma and COPD, emphysema, and people who are healthy now, if they keep being exposed to a lot of smoke, might get sick in the future. The links are there, the nexus is there, and recreation is really the worst reason to expose people to those kind of health risks. And I really think we need to take a look at allowing wood burning fireplaces in new homes. In 1990, around there, Las Vegas prohibited new homes going in from having wood burning fireplaces because they were having air quality problems. And they're dealing with this in San Jose, California, requiring, you know, whether or not they should require people to replace wood burning stoves with gas burning before they sell their homes.
About 30 seconds.
Because they're having air quality impacts. So it's a very serious issue. And I just, one more thing I want to say. I know that I'm sick and most people aren't, but I'm surprised at how many people I've talked to that are healthy, that this issue has resonated with them. I know it's controversial, but you'd be surprised at how much support there is from people who don't want to be breathing fumes. They have new neighbors that are coming in that are burning wood. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Clayton?
Hello, Clayton Petrie. I live in Bellingham, and I used to be Wendy's neighbor, and I have to say, the Silver Beach neighborhood seems obsessed with fires. So I have two comments. One of them might be putting a little bit of salt in your wounds, but the city council decided to take a different course of action than you recommended to them on the comp plan, the UGA boundaries and the population. And they lowered the population that they want to accommodate, and they increased the ratio of commuters coming in by leaving the bigger number for jobs. So, you know, that's, it doesn't take very much percent change to make a big difference in our traffic patterns coming in. You can look at the traffic study in the draft EIS, and I think they're revising it for the final EIS. But, you know, if you've lived here for not that long, you've seen traffic get much, much, much worse in Bellingham. The queues and the idling, getting off the freeway and trying to come into the city off the freeway. It's incredible how people line up into the freeway now. Just 10 years ago, that didn't happen, even when the lanes were shorter. And so I don't know how that, I don't, when I read the health chapter, I just kept thinking, gosh, you know, they keep talking about this stuff, and how important it is to plan not to do that. And we're planning to do more of it, and not only more of it, but increase the amount of commuting in. And I don't feel like what they're working on, I know that what the city council recommended does not fit in with what the thing, what this chapter talks about at all. The second thing I wanted to talk about was water. The sewer and water is very expensive in the city. It's like $200 every two months. And they have a metering program. They're going to put meters in Birchwood soon, that's where I live. And I am going to say that it will kill personal gardening. It's very easy to go over the gallons that they allow you right now. It doesn't take very much use. If you have a couple of kids, you'll blow through it really fast. If you're active and you need, you know, you run or you bike in the winter time when you get all muddy and you have to wash your clothing, you know, very often, you'll blow through it really fast. I know this, because my last house had a meter in the house before that. So I have an idea. Look, I'm not going to complain about something. I have a solution, and that is, why don't we make an easy-to-get extra credit for water in, when you get metered, if you have a garden? And so I have a garden box. It's about the size of those tables, but too wide. And I'm actually pretty surprised at how much water I use every day keeping that thing going. And, you know, if you read the health chapter, you'll see that there's a big emphasis on growing food, or having healthy food, and, you know, one of the things you can't do is use runoff from the top of your house. You can't do the water reclamation thing, because that's not very clean water for growing food. But if you made something easy where you just send a picture in with an application of your garden box, or wherever your garden is, and you get a credit. Now, what I'm talking about doesn't reduce the amount you pay. You still pay that $100 a month, but if you go over the gallons that they normally allow, you can go up, you know, maybe it's a $75 credit. I think that might cover a medium-sized, a Birchwood garden, which are kind of big, but-
About 30 seconds.
And, you know, if the person never actually did the gardening, they probably won't use that water, and you're not out anything. If they use it, then we're achieving our goal, and I guess if they watered their lawn and lied about it, it doesn't really cost the city any extra money anyways. And I'd be willing to take that risk personally. But I just, I just think that's something that you might want to consider doing as part of this new chapter, because water's already really expensive here, and I just don't see people being able to afford to garden at their home with, once they get a meter. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Anyone else? April?
I'm April Barker, 3127 Birchwood Avenue, and I just wanted to publicly thank the health department, Melissa especially, for all the really hard work that they put into. I was at a county council meeting, they were with the health department, they were able to, not department, sorry, the health group, when the county meets, is the health board. And they gave a really phenomenal presentation to understand about what these health, what this health language is, and its importance in coming into the comprehensive plan. And I would like to take it a step further, and I'm not quite sure how to go about that, but watching the process of how we looked at annexation, and there was really kind of two fences there. And there was just a point where there, it seemed to me like there might have been some middle ground somewhere when we started, if we were able to really have this conversation about what is a healthy community, and is this development, is this going to provide a healthy community, and then maybe look at it from that lens, and take it away from, you know, the developer and the neighborhood and the pitting that happens there. We have some developments that have happened in the past, and if we overlook it, they can happen in the future, that cost us so much socially in having to go back and change what we did, having to redo certain developments, and then just the implication of having, having those really difficult spaces where we've either separated classes, we've put many people who are highly, highly impacted in areas with very little infrastructure, very little access to fresh foods, those kinds of things. So I'm really glad to see that we're doing this, but I would say I'd love to see it be at the forefront of the comprehensive plan, that I think we are already on our way with that, the way we look at parks and trails, but that this whole idea of creating a healthy community is the most important, and we're willing to do the costs and look at that now, so we don't have to then pay for it later in life. So thank you very much, and I'm really glad to see this as a topic tonight, so.
Thank you, April. Okay. So I don't think there's any more commenters, so we'll close the public comment portion of this discussion topic and open it up to planning commissioners for comments or questions. Anybody have any questions for staff, or any comments they'd like to make?
I guess I would actually make a clarifying comment-
Sure, yeah.
-that Clayton mentioned that it's a chapter, it's not a dedicated health chapter. We're integrating it throughout the plan, so it will be reflected in each chapter. And I also did want to thank the health department and Melissa for all their hard work. Melissa was at our open house for the comp plan just the other night, so she's been putting in a lot of extra hours this week, too.
Well, I have a comment, unless you-
I was just, it was really interesting, looking at some of these statistics, I thought it was pretty neat, and it was cool to have them compiled like that and see, you know, how we compare and how we stack up to the rest of the state. It was kind of, not information that you just get every day, so it's nice to have.
Melissa put that together for us.
That was great. Well, I think what this shows you is that we, as a community, we do think a lot about community health in a lot of different ways, and we do have a lot of policy language in our comprehensive plan, at least in my opinion, that does promote community health. There's things we need to do to move forward and continue that, but I think that this is, I read through this packet, I don't see any recommendations, probably because maybe stay in the course is the recommendation, or are there recommendations here?
Page five.
Oh, there we go.
Yes, and they're kind of broken out by-
Oh, I see, so those are all-
By topic area, yes.
So, I have one, there's one thing for me that's missing from this discussion, though, and that is, we talk a lot about access to, like, trails and parks, and the ability for people to go out and exercise in proximity to park space. Talk about, you know, promoting bicycles and traffic, you know, not promoting traffic, and promoting climate action change, downtown, urbanization, you know, infill, all these things contribute, reduce sprawl, and they're all good things. I don't see anything in here that talks about jobs. And I think jobs are a really important part of community health. I look at the data that we were presented with, and it's, something struck me. The things that struck me most was that when you look at the adult health factors by income for Waukesha County, there's eight tables provided, and there's a red line that shows the Waukesha County average, and the only demographic that exceeds that Waukesha County average in every single one of these tables is the group of people who are making less than $25,000 a year. It's our poorest people, who are the least healthy. And I also noted that on our, we had some selected demographic characteristics, and one of them was on poverty, and I noticed that Bellingham has an 8% higher poverty rate among our total population in the county. So the county's at 16%, Bellingham's at 25%. And we also have an average median household income that's $10,000 lower. It's about 20% lower. So for me, personally, I think we, what I feel like we're doing is, we're doing a great job as a community of providing opportunities for people to stay healthy and subsidizing public health services and making sure people have access to healthcare, and that's one side of the equation. But for me, there's a whole other side, which is providing upward mobility for people, moving them out of the demographic where they can't stay healthy, where they can't afford good food, where they're spending too much of their money on their mortgage. Affordable housing's a big part of that. And so I don't see anything in here that talks about jobs, and how we make our community wealthier on an individual basis, and make people more able to afford to stay healthy, because that's a big part of it, if you look at the data. And so, and I don't know, we had a discussion about this, and we talked about economic development, how much you can do through policy language to actually generate jobs, but I feel like it would be really important for us to add some specific policy language, maybe it goes in the economic development chapter, that talks about how we want to be thinking about those things. I don't have that language now, but it's the other side of the coin, and we're doing a lot as a community on one side of the coin. We should be talking openly and encouraging the other side of the coin, which is making people more comfortable financially in this community, and jobs, and supporting job growth is one way to do that. So that's the only comment I have on this chapter, or not chapter, on this topic.
Well, I would just say, related to that, that there are a whole lot of other top, health-related topics, I mean, other than the ones listed here. I mean, we could get into natural disasters, and, you know, all sorts of other issues, but I think really the, our review and the health department's review was really focused on that physical activity and equitable access to trails and parks and recreation and healthy foods. I mean, they were sort of narrowed in on certain topics, and then all those other issues like jobs, I mean, that's definitely on our radar screen, and I think you'll see that in several chapters, especially the economic development chapter. But we are looking at those living wage jobs as an issue.
Sure. I just, in these recommendations, there's two recommendations on economic development chapter, and neither of them talks about jobs. One talks about providing incentives for healthy food access, and the other one talks about linking the local food system. So I'm just saying, I think we should actually try and incorporate some language if it's not there. And, you know, not to belabor the point, but if you work all day in a low-wage job that's really hard, and you go home, you can have a park next door, you're probably not going to be encouraged to go out and utilize that park, because you're wiped out, and you're, this is about, for me, it's about mental health, which is a big part of this, you know? You're stressed. You can barely pay your mortgage, you know? Your mental health is deteriorating in that environment, and you're not, you can have all the services around you, if you're not motivated to go use them, you're not going to. And so creating an environment where people feel better when they get home from work and have more disposable income to go buy a bike, so they can go ride it, you know? Those are the things I'm talking about. So that's it, sorry. Jeff?
So, one thought on that is, you know, I've read a lot of economic development literature over the years, and, you know, there's a lot of focus on creating new industries and creating new jobs. There usually, until recently, hasn't been a lot of discussion about compensation of existing jobs. So, you know, I don't know if you want to perhaps recommend broadening the economic development chapter to looking at recent trends in other cities and how they deal with that sort of thing, or whether that's a dangerous topic. I mean, the $15 minimum wage, that kind of thing. It's basically where you start to go in the direction of looking at what broad-based economic development means, rather than just, hey, can we pull in a Boeing subdivision here, and, you know, can we do this, or get some longshore jobs? That's more of a global economic development thing. And I would think it'd go in that chapter, but I don't know, it's up to planning staff how they want to tackle that kind of stuff. Just additional thoughts. I did have a few recommendations that I wanted to dial in on when we get to that point, but it looked like Lisa was going to respond.
The economic development chapter is fairly recent, so we probably aren't going to be doing a whole lot of changes to that chapter, just as an FYI.
Sure. Steve?
I refer to one of the bullet points, vision and general comments on page five.
to be doing a whole lot of changes to that chapter, just as an FYI.
Sure. Steve?
I refer to one of the bullet points, vision and general comments on page five. Incorporate policies and enhance access to healthy foods. I think it was, might have been a couple of years now that my downtown group of Bellingham put on a panel downtown in the Parkade, and they had at that meeting the owners of several supermarkets. And one of the topics was, how do we get people downtown? What comes first? Do you have the food stores down there and then people come, or do people come and then you bring the food stores? And it's very interesting, because one of the owners of a chain that no longer exists here in Bellingham made the comment that, right now grocery stores are too many in the city of Bellingham. There's not enough for them all to survive. So, and that has come to fruition, because his stores went out, a cost cutter went out. Now we see a couple, and one new one coming in on Lakeway. I don't understand that, but he's coming in. To incorporate policies that enhance access, that worries me. I hear subsidies, I hear incentives to put in stores that don't make any money, based on the fact that this panel said we're overbuilt in grocery stores in the city of Bellingham. So that one line kind of concerns me, that we've developed a new subsidy, or thinking about a new subsidy here in the city to subsidize a losing enterprise.
Might respond. I don't believe we really are talking about subsidy. A good example, there are food deserts. Those are areas where all that's available is processed food. In those low-income areas, that's the only choice many people have. What regulations have been used in some others, and we're not proposing them, just so you're aware, are include that you have to have fresh produce in those stores. I mean, that's a requirement in Seattle, in certain areas. That's the extent of what they're talking about, so that at least you offer a choice. And that's a cost of doing business, to be very honest, for the folks who run those stores, but there's a social good with it. I'm not saying that's the approach we take here, but I think that's what I was trying to get after.
That, and also just encouraging more community gardens and farmers' markets and access to healthy foods.
That was a great comment, I thought, about, from Clayton, about perhaps generating some kind of earned credit if a person has a garden. And water here is expensive, and I know we're paying for a new processing plant that's probably the reason, but I thought it was a good suggestion and makes some sense. I would like to see that, it would probably encourage a lot more personal home gardens.
So, are you at the point where we've addressed questions and we should start going through some of the recommendations? Because I had comments on three recommendations and/or questions, and I didn't want to jump the gun on that.
Yeah, is there any questions at this time? Yeah, I'm ready to tackle that.
Okay.
Yeah, go for it.
Well, why don't I just do one and then we can round robin?
Okay.
If other people have them. The first one I had was under land use. On the, it's on page six and it's the fifth bullet. It says, "Consider adding policies regarding urban agriculture and preservation of urban land for agricultural uses." That gave me a real pause, because I see the land inventory in the city of Bellingham, I see critical areas, I see wildlife habitat, I see a need for housing and places for people to work, and then I see, all of a sudden, my original idea or understanding of GMA was, you know, you're going to try to get the urban areas to be urban areas and fulfill all those other functions, and now one of the policies will be to also provide agricultural land in the city. And I'm just wondering, is that really what you were thinking, or is that wording something I'm misinterpreting?
Well, a couple of responses to that. This is generally talking about small-scale, not large-scale commercial. There are areas that are not suitable for development for residential or commercial uses. Hillside gardening and terracing of slopes can provide it. I note that small-scale production is a common European phenomenon, both container gardens and small areas. I think that's what we're looking at, but it could come across about, are we preserving mega fields at the expense of development? So my sense is, it's accessory and supportive, but not a primary use. We're not advocating for urban, major urban farms and major production. We're talking about integrating it into development. That being said, it's a good point, if you lose, if you lose land, do we have, just as a curiosity, do we have any identified lands of agricultural significance within the city limits? Sorry. That would have been the areas that you would have preserved and would have been consistent with growth management.
Right. Well, see, I'm familiar, you know, obviously, I love Joe's Gardens and it's a great thing, but I don't think every neighborhood needs to dedicate that amount of land to that necessarily at the expense of critical areas or something else. But it is an issue, because there are areas up on King Mountain, for example, that have been agricultural uses in the past, they're, you know, five-acre, 10-acre farms, and I don't know how you're balancing those objectives. So I at least want to point that out. Tread carefully, I guess, or know what you want to recommend and what you really want to frame there.
Does anybody else have any specific recommendations to comment on? Steve?
Yeah, in the land use, same thing. Again, add a policy regarding equitable access to health food. Right now, can a person from a farm take a pickup truck, drive onto a lot or a parking lot and start selling food? That's what I see here.
Very, very complex issue. Farmers are entitled in Washington to sell their produce on their own land and in certain designated areas. Whether someone grows something in their backyard, not a farmer per se, and can sell it as a somewhat of a gray area. Yeah, I think what happens on that is, yeah, mobile food vending and community gardens, it's the notion is, can we figure out a system that would allow, within the rules, for that to occur? And is it appropriate?
I know a lot of cities that I've been to, it's not entirely a farmer's market like we know at our depot, but they do close city streets and pickup trucks come in with the produce from out in the county, and that's one day they can drive in, sell for a couple hours and drive out. And it's been very successful, from what I've seen. And it's a great night out. I've seen cities close down their major thoroughfare. San Luis Obispo closes on Thursday night, the downtown area for farmer pickup trucks. Yeah, and it's very, very successful. And I think that would be some kind of a, if they were an incentive or a policy, that we're doing so much now downtown, we're trying to enhance and bring in people, I think that would be perhaps a very good idea to supplement some of these activities that are going on.
I have one land use, before we move to the next one. The third bullet under land use, continue implementing the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan to address inequable gaps in access to parks and/or open space. It seems like our community demands for parks and recreation areas and open space are changing, and we hear people talk about preserving open space areas for habitat, we talk about people having a proximity to a trail or a proximity to a park. And so my question is, is where does parks' level of service come into this discussion? Or does it? Because I wonder if we should talk about policy language to reevaluate the metrics that we use for level of service. And we talked about this when we did the parks little update a couple of years ago, to determine if our current metrics are actually serving the community's health needs. I see proximity, like right now, we have, I think, I think one of our metrics is proximity, and I think that's a great metric, you know? Everyone has the ability to leave their home and get to a park or trail quickly is really important. But one of our major ones is just park acreage per thousand people. And I personally question whether or not that's an appropriate metric in our changing community and the changing dynamic we have, because it effectively leads to just more and more acreage that isn't maintained and maybe isn't even usable for people to maintain their health. So, is there a way to, it's a huge discussion, but is there a way to incorporate or maybe ask you guys to look at incorporating policy language that talks about us looking at our level of service metrics?
Well, we will be looking at those as part of the capital facilities plan.
Okay, so that is part of this.
Capital facilities element.
Yeah.
And in doing that, what you'd want to do is put a placeholder, say, "Consider the effect of level of service on health."
Exactly.
And the issue, it is an issue of whether one uses the number of football fields as a metric or the proximity to neighborhood parks as a metric. And there's arguments on both sides in terms of type of facility and distance. One of the challenges is that even with close proximity, there's no guarantee of use. And I think that's really getting to the core of the health issue, is how do we change lifestyles? And a lot of it is education, a lot of it is working with the school district, and probably if it's not already in there, we should have a policy that talks about working with the Bellingham School District. Because if you imprint it early on, those healthy lifestyles, they follow you your whole life. I think you'll agree with that. That might be useful.
Thank you. Sounds like that might be more a discussion for a later date.
A placeholder here to consider it, and then at capital facilities, look back and say, looking through the lens of health, are we achieving our end?
That's what I'm getting at, yeah. Looking through that lens of health, are we achieving what we're trying to achieve with our level of service metrics and how we're developing our parks? So, thank you, that's exactly what I was thinking about. Jeff?
So, I'll apologize in advance for this, because this will be extremely unpopular. But under housing, under the second bullet, it's add policies that address lifecycle housing and aging in place. And I just wanted to have a comment here that I have been involved in aging in place situations, and I know that that was a buzzword and that was considered to be a desirable outcome and objective for many years, but in actual practice, I've seen many instances where it has not been particularly good. It's isolating, you have one person in a five-bedroom house sometimes, and on city streets, when I used to be very aware of what was going on, you'd have blocks where you'd have three houses that were just kind of closed up and there was one person in them and not much was happening and they were isolated. What I'm getting at here is just that this, the way this is stated, is adding policies that address that, and I just would like to encourage the city to be neutral. You know, you don't have to debate about whether it was a good thing or a bad thing, but I don't know that it necessarily makes a lot of sense to have policies that encourage that or incentivize it or provide additional resources to try to make something that may or may not be a good thing actually happen versus appropriate housing for the appropriate point in somebody's life. So I just want to flag that, because I know that's something, people glaze over it, they look at it, aging in place must be fantastic. If you've dealt with aging parents and you've dealt with situations like that, you realize, wait a minute, you know, my own parents moved to a community and they're so much happier than they were trying to age in place, even though everything they planned for and their house they bought was all for aging in place, didn't work out. And I just want to make sure, again, it's that opportunity cost of incentivizing something. I'd hate to see it incentivized to lock up housing stock and isolate people when maybe you should just be neutral and not have policies one way or another on it and let people make their own decision.
Yep.
And that really might be more about educating people about what those terms are, because they are used so much. And really, if you look up in the land use, we have a bullet talking about intergenerational or multi-generational planning, and I think that's really what we're getting at, is designing your communities for the very young and the very old, and as people age, they can get around their communities however they want to. So I think that's really what we're getting at there.
My comment was more of stating that aging in place was a primary objective, and so you start getting all supporting policies in it, you know, you get, you know, additional funding for Meals on Wheels, additional funding for Waukesha Transit, for individual transportation, and all these extra programs you start adding up when nobody's really saying, well, is that really the best way to handle something when you have one person in a five-bedroom house that's isolated? So I just was hoping there weren't going to be a lot of judgments on the part of the city to drive policy in a particular direction when I think it's better people make their own choice and you just stay silent on it, but that's just my opinion.
Did you have another one?
I would just like to say, that's not an unpopular thought. I mean, I don't disagree with you at all.
I just read aging in place and I read all these things in the ARP magazine, and it's the wonderful panacea, and then I, having been through that situation and seen how it works in practice, I'm slightly skeptical, but anyway. Okay, so the last one I had was just the, under community design, considering including a policy recommending views of greenery for new developments for mental health benefits. I think that's great, as long as it's a recommendation. I just would hope that it's not a whole new layer of design standards on urban villages to echo my earlier comment. I think that's a good objective, but I just keep it as recommendations, so editorial.
All right, thank you. Phyllis?
I just have a curiosity question. On the bottom of the first page, under healthy community, it says minimize the effects of climate change. I was just sort of curious as to how that might, first page, bottom, very, very, very bottom. Healthy community design can improve people's health by minimizing the effects of climate change. I was just wondering if there was some thought in mind about how a community would go about doing that? This is, like I say, just a curiosity question.
Well, a lot of that is through your transportation options and the type of development that you have, where you're putting development, those types of things. And the more you can bike and walk and use transit, the less you're using your vehicle, therefore reducing your greenhouse gas emissions, which contributes to climate change.
Oh, I looked at this as the effects of climate change, and in other words, it was already happening and we were going to affect that in some way. You're saying we're preventing it from happening, you're hoping?
Minimizing our community's impacts.
Got it.
Contributions to that.
Okay, any other comments or questions for staff? Well, I feel the same way as I did about the other recommendations, in that taken on the whole, I think they summarize well where we're trying to go and they represent well what we can do to add to this. So if everyone's okay with it, we should, I think we should give staff, you know, the confidence to move forward, bring back specific policy language. Obviously, you heard some specific comments from Jeff and everybody, myself, and if there's a way to try and address those when you come back, it gives us something to discuss. And unless there's any dissent from that, I think that's a collective recommendation to come back to us with language. Jeff?
I agree, and that's a nod on my hand. And I also really wanted to thank staff and the Health Department, because it's really useful to me to start having some specific information about sort of what the community looks like, what the impacts are, where we are. I mean, this was absolutely fantastic, and I just want to support that sort of work, you know, just to help guide the discussion as we're fishing through here, trying to find some answers. It's fantastic, so I really appreciate it.
I agree completely. It really is nice to see some data that kind of like frames some of these issues, because policy language is so ephemeral and, you know, hard to pin down, so I echo that wholeheartedly. Thank you. And with that, I think we'll wrap up the work session. Steve, did you have a comment?
I had a question about the schedule.
Well, let's, okay, so let's wrap up the work session. Thank you, staff, thank you for commenting and everyone who came to listen. And with that, we will move into kind of old and new business, which I think Steve's question probably falls within.
Yeah, I had a question. A couple of months ago, we were talking about having a joint meeting with city council. I don't see that on our schedule. Has that gone aside?
At this point, we're going to get our drafts together. I think that's going to be the precursor, and we might, as we get the drafts closer and we have a chance to run through, consider doing that, a joint meeting. But I think what we're looking for direction right now, because the focus areas came out pretty quickly. As I understood it, we were going to do a joint meeting when we were unclear of the focus areas after the open houses. After the open houses, the focuses became very narrow. So, now then the thought is, let's get the drafts together, so we have something to talk about.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Is there any, anything to report on?
No, I think what you're seeing is a model of how we'll be handling the focus areas that were identified, where we'll go through, at least this done, fine work of isolating the existing policies. We'll talk about the key themes, and we'll be coming back to you with sort of these general ideas, not fleshed out and developed into full policy language, but sort of early on to get direction, and then we'll go back and, and do revise the elements. So, so that's kind of the methodology. We'll be doing this a couple more times, so look forward to it.
We'll, we'll go through a couple more of these. We have innovation and sustainability, and then it looks like capital facilities. Is the idea that we'll get through all these before we come back with the policy stuff? And then we'll kind of deal with all of the policy stuff at once?
In terms of production, it's a lot easier. I think you can imagine, because we can, while you're considering one set, we could be working on the next set. You know, because we've gotten direction on them. So, we want to get that initial first blush to get something that's more specific you can respond to.
Thank you. All right, we will adjourn. Thank you.